Let's call a meeting, the town commission meeting. To order 701, Board of Ed is four minutes ahead of us, but 701 by Appleton. We have 2.1 alternate for Mike, and we have one alternate here, Mr. Frank. No, we haven't.
Yeah, we were told.
But I think Evan was appointed last time we had one. So anyway, Tom, you can serve for Mike.
Thank you.
I want to do that.
Minutes of the December 3 meeting is the first order of business. There's some concern about the way down.
So I wanted to come in on 146, 147.
Okay.
And then after that, so, uh, what, through 140. So right here, there's two things I'd like. It's not a question of the correctness of the typing, but line 146, Robin was, clarified for us that national, I'm reading from it, short-term residential rentals are regulated by ordinance. That was from perspective in response to the question I asked. But then, of course, with some dialogue, it was also mentioned that the town attorney had given some insight at an initial start of a meeting process to develop a regulation or some direction. The town attorney agreed with that, though, as a direction for us, a notion of an ordinance. And I raise it because I think it belongs in the minutes. It strikes me as an important point that we had insight from the town attorney to guide us. It's a rare thing that we get guidance from the town attorney. I think it's important when we do and we remind them that it should show up in minutes. So I have a sentence for often that we covered, although probably we could word sniff it somewhere. If you'd like, I can just read a suggested sentence.
Okay.
So the sentence I would suggest, just to piece in a reference, would be, "In response to inquiry about past input from the town attorney, Robin Newton said the town attorney was inclined toward using an ordinance and the Board of Selectmen rather than regulation by zoning regulations," under sense. And then another point I wanted to raise follows that, that the minutes indicate on 148, that Chairman Ryan requested the staff to prepare a text amendment, guessing short-term rentals. And my recollection is that the request was for staff to develop, that staff could develop some reference points that we could refer to the Board of Selectmen with our recommendation that STRs be regulated through an ordinance.
So I think we also asked Bruce that she identify things that we might change in our regs.
Well, then maybe I was confused and it's just missing the point about developing, because our regs would be a text amendment.
Right, but it wasn't necessarily text. We weren't asking something to be so precise as text amendments. It was to say, okay, here's what we recommend the Selectmen do on an ordinance, and here's what we should do to make our regs conform to the request of the Selectmen. Text amendments would be after we agreed on those general terms, I think. So how we phrase that in the minutes, I think we should take out the statement that--
Prepare text amendment?
Prepare text amendment. Prepare some, prepare a document addressing the short-term rental implications for Board of Selectmen and our regs.
Sounds good.
Okay, how's that? Any other comments or corrections?
Well, I saw on line 45, there's a word, it's a line, I think. Page 45, between the end of, I mean, it's just simple line 45.
That takes on the clauses.
There's, the word, see, the word takes place, maybe, because at the end of that first line, it says fabrication nets that takes on premises. I'm assuming it's the word place takes place. So insert the word place on the end of line 45.
Okay. Okay. Your motion for approval with changes?
I'll move approval with that. Yes, written with the changes to be discussed. Clear.
Second, who in favor?
Bye.
Next name?
Thank you. Okay. First order of business is to continue a public hearing of Brennan White, Castle Bruce, respect the exception of Henry James. School changes. I believe that the design review board made a motion on that subject. Robin viewed that.
I was there, but let me cheat and look at his. Yes, they gave a favorable recommendation.
Gave a favorable recommendation on the--
On the design.
On the design.
For the Henry James improvements.
Exterior and interior?
We don't touch the interior. As far as I know.
They just do exterior architecture and landscaping.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, does the applicant care to give us some more words?
Brennan White, Castle Bruce Architects, Land State Architecture. Here with me is project architect Jennifer Van John and John Frioli from Downs, who's our construction manager. I know there were a number of questions last week about logistics and traffic and, you know, how this was all going to work through construction and school activities. And John will be able to speak to that. He did prepare a letter that was submitted to the, in response to some of the staff comments. You should have that letter, keep you go over, kind of the operations, daily operations in general. Downs has spoken with the school administration as well as public safety officials, and everything is in mind. Hours have been coordinated in terms of, you know, when the school drops off and when there's pickups happening, and no deliveries will be scheduled during those times. And I know that was one of the big items last time, another was drainage, which we have now with the town engineering plan, reworked the drainage. There's discussion about the infiltration units only accommodating a 25 a year storm. The town does require hard connection, a close connection to the system. So I pointed out last time that the infiltration unit right here, underground right here, goes to the north of the media center addition, so that's right here, and right here. So previously, we were going to connect to the storm system south. Turns out that that system actually daylights to the south in a location adjacent property. The intention now is to not make that connection, so that system stays as it is. We stay on our property, run to the north and make connection to an existing HBS located right here on Fire Town Road. That actually drains to the north, it's a closed system. The town engineer was in favor of that. Also, to the north, rather than connecting to the line that goes to the west, out to the back of the property, that system will actually be, the infiltration unit right here will be connected to Fire Town as well. So I believe you are aware, Mr. Glidden had prepared a letter, favorable recommendation indicating that we've addressed all of Tom Allen's--
Do you have any questions, man, in commission?
I do, and I'm sorry because I wasn't present for previous discussions. What is the nature of this special exception?
Special exception is to construct the auditorium and the media center on the school properties in order to, it's the usage in that zone.
And that's always-- Right, we are in our 15 zone, so residential.
Requires a special exception.
So any construction on that property would require--
Let's, we can't get into the, too many details of what our regs say, but basically they're adhering to the reg that says that for that use, that property requires a special exception. Okay? Okay? You can ask why we do that, but that is not really fair to the applicant.
So, a special exception, the project isn't performance, the zoning regulations, the, did I mention the syntax, the height requirements? And, John, if you'd like to just give an overview of--
Sure. Construction, like, just our logistics overall. Ken, John, Frioli, Downs Construction, we're the construction manager, and we put together a logistics plan.
You have a--
A notice. Just a, and one out there, I think. Ready? All right, so we put together a logistics plan to show how we would actually execute this project, approach it. And this is a work in progress, it's an integrated approach, as you can see, progress drawing. The last one I have to review this with is the fire marshal and the medical emergency personnel. But what we do is we go through this process, make sure it works for everyone, especially with the educators, school system, anyone who is in and around that building. And then this becomes a document that's part of our scope of work and contract documents and drawings. Every contractor that has a contract with us has to abide by this, it's in their contract, and we enforce it. So what we did is we took our main construction entrance to the north side of the site, we tried to stay as far as possible away from the closest neighbors, to stay away from the driveways, and staying on the north end of the site was our best option because we had more space. This is our primary logistics area. This will not only serve for the addition, the construction of the addition of media center, but also serve as our staging area for all of the interior renovations. Over, well, let me keep going. So over here, this is where our construction field offices would be. We have conic storage, dumpsters, contractor parking. There's also an emergency access gate there in the event that, you know, we needed to first responders to get in or need to get out for whatever reason if this gate was blocked. This gate is also, the entrance driveway is not just an anti-tracking pad of crushed stone, but it's also a by-two-minute driveway after that, and then the mow strip between the sidewalk and the curb will be taken out, and that'll be a temporary by-two-minute apron. So the road will stay clean, dry, can be plowed, swept, safe at all times, and mainly so you can, you know, we can maintain pedestrian access for children, students going back and forth to school. So again, this is our main staging area. Our office will be here throughout the whole project, and our main point of access into the school while we're doing interior renovations will be from this point here, nowhere else, one point only for security reasons. Over on this side is where we're constructing the auditorium addition. Now, this is a little, this is kind of like a standalone area, we've got a fence around it, a gate here that'll go in and out of the driveway, and once this is constructed, this will all be taken down, restored, I think there's new plantings, new landscaping there, and then we don't have to go back there, and we'll continue to work in this area here. These two additions will start in the spring, and it'll go through the spring, the summer, into the winter, and it'll get turned over for the school's use sometime after the first of the year. Okay, however, once that happens, we're still in the school doing interior renovations because it's a phase renovation, so only taking small portions at a time, six, seven classrooms, shuffle them around. We haven't worked out the phasing plan yet, but we're working on that. So we're there. Now, I know there were some concerns about traffic in, I guess I wasn't at the last meeting, but concerns about traffic. We know that they start early there, so 6:50, I think, and you're done by at least, by 7:30, I guess, all traffic is clear. So we would like to say, hey, that's great, let's start at 7:30. However, we'd have workers showing up at 7, 7:15, that would just kind of like, it would be too congested. So we'll just adjust our working hours to start at 8:00. So we'll go from 8:00 to 4:30. So we have the flexibility to make that a condition of the project. So we'll, when traffic is done, we'll be coming in and doing our thing. In the afternoon, it's not a problem. We have a policy when working on occupied school campus, when the school bus times are there and parent drop-off, our gates are closed and no construction traffic can go in or out. So if there's a concrete truck waiting to get in, he's going to go down the road and wait, or if there's a dump truck waiting to get out, he's going to be in the gate until the school buses are cleared, the vehicles are cleared, then we open up the gates again, and we can go about our business. We'll still work within those, the confines of our gate, of our fence in areas, but no traffic in and out, so that we don't commingle any, you know, traffic and unnecessary, you know, construction vehicles. Keep in mind, our fences aren't a shabby, you know, temporary construction fence, we construct them with a continuous top rail, bottom rail, scrim fabric on it, so it's neat, clean, and it looks orderly at all times. And then in that letter I mentioned, we have a good neighbor policy. So prior to starting any project in a residential area, we'll hold a meeting, probably like, maybe February, somewhere around there. By then, we'll have all, we'll have interior logistics plans, we'll have a lot of stuff worked out, we'll probably have contractors on board with contracts, will be up the bid. And we'll hold a meeting at the school, we'll send out notices to all the butters, anyone in the public who wants to come. At that point, we'll discuss working hours, the project, what it entails, we'll give out information, how you can contact us if anyone thinks there is a vehicle going too fast, or something fell off a vehicle, or noise, or whatever concerns there are. We'll talk about dust control, if you look at the Google Earth image, there's swimming pools in the area, obviously, so we'll talk about those concerns, and anything that any other, you know, residents have, any concerns, and we'll take those into consideration and incorporate them into our plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your phasing, I know the front parking lot there was kind of scheduled for the summer.
Yep.
So what about the construction, you've got the gas line and our sewer line that's going to go through there?
Right.
But I don't think you can wait until summer for that.
Yeah, well, that one, that gas line is going to have to go through the first summer because these additions, we need that gas service to provide, you know, fuel for this addition. So that has to go through there first. If we don't finish all of that area, at least the gas line has to go through there for the first summer so that we can open that building up in the fall.
Right, and you've got the same with the storm drain?
Yes, yep.
So those will both be done during summer, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, and, you know, starting in April, March, April with these projects, we've had enough time for this middle review process and procurement of the materials. So that's, it's good timing. You know, we don't, we might not have everything that we need, if there's any long lead items, but we'll certainly have pipe and gas services and what we need for that.
So that, I can't see where the storm now goes through, so it'll actually go through the lawn area?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's out, Brennan, is it out along the curb?
It's--
It's inboard of the sidewalk, right?
Right, it's in the kind of tree belt area, it's adjacent to the sidewalk, shows up better, so. Here's the sidewalk. There's a property line, so it's in, in the--
Yes, okay. And the trees lying there will be taken down, right, the existing tree line?
No, it's actually--
I thought there was X's through it, but--
There are, over here where we have infiltration--
Yeah, but I thought the front tree line was also changed.
No, there's, there's, there is one tree to the, or three, right here. Oh, I went wrong. Since our last meeting, we did add in another large shade tree, shifted this shade tree to the north to accommodate that underground infiltration system, and added another kind of off the corner here.
I ask, so the construction site to the south, separate construction site, are there going to be vehicles moving from that construction site to the main area back and forth?
Good question. Very few. So what we would do here, and we've talked about this, especially with the public safety, is, that's a lot of masonry construction there, I think there's, you know, the high walls with the auditorium. So what we would do is we would have our masonry contractor set up another batch plant right there specifically for that addition. So we're not badging mortar over here and then coming out into the road, driving it up the street back with a forklift. So we put up a forklift and then whatever other vehicles are required, and it'll stay in there. Okay, so there might be, you know, two vehicle, two, you know, sets of equipment there for a period of time. All construction workers will park up in here and walk back and forth.
But for a short period of time, you'll remove material to take to the, you know, the station site?
Uh, yeah, the material we strip off, like such as topsoil, yeah, that'll go into this topsoil pile, which is--
This is one time, right?
Right, yep.
Now, I appreciate the cement truck waiting outside the gate, but just parking down the road is not a great--
Yeah, well--
It's not a great idea.
Yeah, well, we coordinate that very carefully. So prior to any major activity, such as, let's say, concrete foundation, structural steel, whatever it is, we have everyone who has a hand in that at these meetings, all right? So ahead of time, we have all of the information, but then we meet a final time. And for instance, if, like, you know, this could be any supplier, let's say the successful ready-mix supplier is Tilcon, all right? So before they're allowed to bring a truck on a vehicle, a truck on site, they know the policies and procedures, we have their insurance certificates, we have everything, quality control, flagman, so they know if it's a certain time, well, they might park down Shop and Plaza somewhere. But the best thing to do is time it accordingly, so concrete's just not sitting in there.
Part of the concern, just so that you hear it clearly, the concern is that's a two-lane road.
Yes, yes.
Not much of a road. There's no way ready-mix truck is going to go down the road and railways and pull over.
Yeah.
And we're still going to have two-lane traffic.
Right. Right, and not block traffic.
So I think you guys need to make a plan for where exactly they're going to go parking.
Yeah.
Stopping along Fire Town Road is not a plan. Not going to make people--
Yeah, well, it's a good point, we'll take that into consideration, glad you brought that up.
Well, I have a couple other--
Sure.
So I'm interested in, the access to the smaller fenced-in area to the left there is through a gate, and then it's a short distance to the driveway from that gate.
Right, it's right there.
Approximately how much distance is it?
Oh, I think it's the width of the, of a walk, five feet.
From that gate onto the asphalt driveway over the curve.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't understand where it's--
So right here, from here out, from this gate into the parking lot, it's just, you know, it's right there.
Okay, so my question is, for the routine access to the building, there's sports in the afternoon, there's people coming and going all the time, they're going to have to merge with ready-mix trucks and everything else going in and out of that gate?
Well, again, during high-traffic times of school activities and school bus and parent drop-off, no vehicles are going out. At times when sports activities or something's going on in the existing auditorium, yes, that will require a flagman on our part to make sure the gate's closed, vehicles aren't coming or going, you know, they have to stop, wait for traffic to go by, we would control that.
So that's your sort of plan, they have a flagman there--
Yes.
--to contribute to order.
Yep, yeah, we have a flag person and actually a safety monitor, well, when we're working in the school especially.
My other question is, how long, in the scheme of the construction timing, how long do you expect the crane to be sitting in that crane bed?
Crane time is actually very short, you know, the crane time could be anywhere from one to two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the crane, the crane time goes fast, when you're erecting steel, it just, it goes up fast, it's the work that comes after, it's all hung up there, the bolting, the welding, all that stuff is what takes time. So the crane comes and goes, and the cranes are very expensive by the day, so, you know, try to get rid of them as quick as possible.
Sure, thank you. But one other thing, do we have the latest drawings?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, you mentioned earlier that people will be invited to an information session, residents and so forth, anybody that wants to attend. And full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board of Education, and I won't bog on any of this, but we feel pretty strongly about having parents fully informed, in this particular case, having parents fully informed about any safety precautions that are being taken so that they're not concerned--
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
--about the children's safety. So I'm just wondering if there's a possibility to communicate with parents, to give them comfort that appropriate safety measures are being taken.
Sure, I'll give you a little preview, I know this is probably not the right preview, but you asked, so I'll go ahead. So typically, we're working in occupied school, we take the security very seriously, obviously, and what we do is, we have this background check policy. Now, it's a little different than most contractors. Most people say, you have to have a, you have to have a background check policy. Our contractors sign an agreement with our contract saying that all their employees have gone through a background check, right? But do we ever really know that? Okay? Not really, because it's confidential information, so we can't specifically ask for someone's results. So what we do in a case like this, where it's public safety and children, we bring it to the Simsbury Police Department, okay, we'll go to whatever town we're working in. So what we'll do is, we hire an independent background check agency, we use Thurlin, but there's many different ones, and we would make it a condition of employment here. For every contractor, they have to propose, any worker they propose that's going to work on this project at any time, we need their name and their information, all right? It's giving to this, you know, independent background check consultant, they do a check on him, on he or she, the results come back, all right, and we don't see them, all right, but we just identify flags that should be raised, and we do that with the educators and with the police department on what they want to see. If a flag is raised, those results will go right to the police department, and they will make the call whether that individual should be allowed to work on that site or not. And then what we do is, we have an approved list of workers, all right? Prior to anyone coming on our job site, they have to go through a worker orientation, which is a video, a policy, what to do, what don't to do, you know, there's, there's the normal stuff, no fraternization with students and staff, no smoking, no radios, all that stuff, but all the real detailed information. And then we have a monitor stationed at our point of entry, all right, and that's an actual construction person on our team, and sort of like a, you know, a bouncer, all right? And he has a list of everyone who's approved on that job site, the workers come, they have a badge, and we're working with the police department right now, we have to meet with the school and the Board of Ed to find out what type of badge we're going to use, a picture badge, it's going to be the school-type badge, or a badge that we produce, we've done both ways before. And our person won't let anyone in that door unless they're on that list, they're pre-approved, and we have their, their badge. Now, after a few days, a few weeks, you know, you get to know everyone, it gets a little easier. But I always give this example, is, you know, it's a rainy day, all right, there's a painting contractor, let's say, who's working here for us, well, he, he has a job that gets rained out somewhere, so he calls up and says, hey, you know, just send those three guys, send those three painters over to Henry James Memorial School, come and see the form, we've got plenty of work there. Those painters may have never been, you know, proposed for that project, all right, and they'll just walk on the site. It happens every day in construction, all right? So that's our way of, of, you know, a double check, all right? So you can never let your guard down, even though you're three, four, or five months into the project, there's always that day when you get somebody that falls through the cracks. So that's, that's a, you know, method of ensuring that.
Okay. I was referring--
Anyway, Tom, excuse me, let's stick to the special exception--
Yeah, yeah. That's why I was saying--
I was just, with respect, I'd like to just follow up to the question.
That's very interesting to hear what you've said about the security of the workers, but what I had in mind was some way to inform the parents about--
but what I had in mind was some way to inform the parents about the safety regulations and procedures so that they know there's not construction traffic moving around and they're not going to have to worry about that, and that's enough said.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Jackie?
Um, I'd run through, I feel like they've addressed a lot, if not every, comment and concern that we had to this point. So I was, I do have a question.
Actually, raised a question. So does, Board of Eds already signed off on this, right? Or does it go to, does it come to us and then the Board of Eds?
The Board of Eds already signed off and approved.
Did you, did Board of Ed approve it?
Approved. All of this, all these details?
I just found that on, on...
Their contract.
Board of Ed approved the financing, the cost, and the fundamental plans that we saw, and it approved. But as far as all these details...
Details, yeah.
No, no, we haven't gotten into that.
That would be through the Board of Ed's staff, I presume. Any event?
Ray?
Well, I just have one design question, a site design question. I noticed in some of the questions that you guys addressed, it's the bike rack number?
Yeah.
So if, there's about 25 kids that ride their bikes. I, I just wonder why only 26 bike racks are going to be provided? I mean, it just seems like, is there not enough room for them?
That was on a good day. The principal, actually, and you may have it, it was an email, the principal saying that on a, on a good day, 25 kids at the most, very most would typically ride their bikes.
Sorry, Gavin. Go ahead and behave. You have any comments? Any more questions, Bruce?
No, most, thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the public have questions for this application?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1863.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, five, nothing, one abstention. Mr. Frank abstain. Okay, the next item of business is the, this is the application of Michael Glynn. We have a, a notice that didn't appear in the current, so that we have to set this to reopen on January 7th. So there's no action to be taken in that application.
Yes.
So the next thing is the application 1862 of Milton Gregory Rue for the Storage Pros Site Plan Amendment. Convert building one to climate controlled use of property of... Change of use of office to self-storage. No exterior changes in plan. The staff report recommends approval. Do you have any comments, Robin?
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, it's all interior work. It's just basically a change of use from office space to storage space. They had gone to the design review board and there was kind of a lot of back and forth about the exterior of the building, so they decided they would just leave it as is, not touch the exterior of the building, as it can be seen from Route 10, and kind of all the options provided were not favorable. So leaving it as is is kind of the best course of action.
Okay, so the cement, whatever the levels won't go with?
Yeah, so there's windows and doors there, and I'm not, I'm guessing maybe they'll put signs up to say the doors are not accessible or workable any longer, but the exterior will just remain as it is now.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Milton Gregory Rue, I'm the architect for this project. My office and residence is in Woodbury. And essentially, this is the first building at 1280 Hot Meadow. This is just a Google Earth snapshot that shows that the front building that faces Hot Meadow Street, there's actually the bike path, and then commercial buildings in front of that, so not much at all is really visible from, from Hot Meadow. And originally, in the 1984 approved site plan, this front building was intended to have a business tenants, kind of multiple tenants, and then all of the buildings in the back are the typical cookie cutter self-storage type buildings. Okay? So this is what the building in the front looks like. And the real struggle for the owner of the property is to ever be able to sustain tenants here. So it's a very high vacancy rate in this front building, whereas the self-storage use has 6% vacancy, 94% of it's always occupied. And so this, it makes no economic sense for them to keep the front building for use for business tenants. On, on top of that, they're constantly being asked by customers or prospective customers if they have climate-controlled storage, which has become much more popular these days, where people do have things that they want to store in a heated and air-conditioned and dehumidified space, that's not just out of snow and rain, but takes it to the next level of climate control. So in this floor plan that we submitted for, for this building, it's really a very simple conversion. The, on the far south end, currently, that, that's always been the business office for the self-storage business. And, and then the rest of this sort of S-shaped building that runs for about 300 feet were all those multiple business tenants. So the idea is to simply remove the interior construction of those business suites and, and construct inside the building the metal cubicles that people use for storage. And you can see there's about five different sizes. The ratio of them is kind of based on what they anticipate the market will, will want to have, everything from a five-by-five up to basically a 10-by-10 space. And so as far as the exterior of the building, no work will be done at all to change the appearance on, that faces Hot Meadow. So as, as Robin mentioned, it was quite, quite the debate. I didn't, really didn't expect it to make such a stir on what the solutions would be. So the owner said, you know what, we don't want to keep going round and round with multiple options when there's really actually no necessity for us to change the outside appearance of the building. Facing Hot Meadow, as you can see, our, our windows every now and then, along with doors into those spaces, actually, no access is going to be provided to the building from the Hot Meadow side. So literally, those doors will be fixed shut, hardware taken off them, and that's it. And there'll be actually a wall constructed behind them. As you can see in this photo, most of these spaces have blinds anyway, so you never really see what's going on inside those suites to begin with. So we're just going to construct a, a white wall inside the building so that it'll protect the, the storage units, and it won't change the appearance at all. From, from the outside, it'll look like it's a multi-tenant building, but there won't be a bunch of signs there anymore with businesses' names. The access to the building will be from the backside, essentially the, the east side of the building, because there's, there's a gate here, so we have controlled access at this point with the driveway going by. The manager is here and has a full view of people coming and going. So the idea is, once you've acquired a, a space that you're renting, you're going to be driving around back, just like everybody else for the other storage units, and come alongside one of the doors on the back and bring your stuff in, store it or take it out. And there'll be no access at all from the front. In the 1984 site plan, which like I said, there's really, there's nothing to even show on the plan that would change, there was a paved parking area here, and then there was a gravel parking area here for these businesses, so this gravel lot will now just have no use. And, and as I said, nothing would change on the exterior. There's already a, a wide berth here on the inside to give access to the, to the rear of the building where it's more appropriate to access it for those self-storage units.
Thank you. Commission, have questions? Start with Tom.
Access to the inside units, is that by some sort of vehicle or hand trucks or how do you even remember your stuff?
Yeah, you don't, you don't bring a vehicle up to the building.
Okay, I got it.
There's, there's a couple of overhead doors, openings that are already there, actually.
I see that, yeah.
And so you just pull up if you have a lot, a van or something you want to load, but there'll be hand trucks inside.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I do have a question. What about the time for access to these units? Are they accessible at night, and is that all lit? That whole area where people will be coming and going or not?
They, to be honest with you, I don't know what the hours of operation are here, but people can come after hours because they're given a code. If you're renting a space, then you have electronic access and you can come in at, at other times, so it would be the same, would be true for, for this building. You have a code to get into the building.
Is there any lighting in that area or not?
Uh, the lighting is all motion-activated, so yeah, there, there is lighting throughout the site and then within the building. Because these buildings get accessed so infrequently, you just can't keep the lights on all the time, so all the lighting inside is motion-activated. As soon as you walk in, it starts lighting up.
Good thing.
Tom?
So it don't change any of the drainage in the front?
No.
Were you having issues?
Jackie? Has a motion?
Well, let me just ask one more question. I mean, because you're going to climate control, there's got to be some HVAC going on somewhere.
So it's already climate-controlled, these are all business suites.
Oh.
So we, so we take down the walls, but in every, you know, 500 square feet or so, there's a system, and so we'll make use of that system.
Okay, staff has recommended approval, there's a draft. Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, you want to include, the applicant asked for a waiver of the requirement that you submitted a site plan. You want to mention that? A cruel waiver of the site?
If, if there's, Mike, is that appropriate? Do you think it's necessary?
Yeah, you can, I'm sorry, I should have included that, because yeah, everything's interior, so it would be a waiver of, apologize.
Okay.
I think I cited the paragraph in my letter.
You did. So, someone want to make a motion? People just had a thread of three, where I've seen you say...
I got a second. You have a site plan? Okay, I move to approve application 1862 of Milton Gregory Group, AIA Architects' Agent, Storage Pros, Simsbury LLC and JA Simsbury LLC. Owners for Site Plan Amendment to convert building number one to climate-controlled self-storage use on the property located at 1280 Hot Meadow Street. Site Plan Amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. One, administrative zoning permit is required for change of use. Two, no exterior changes to the building or plan, changes to the facade require approval from the zoning commissioner. Three, we waive the requirement of a site plan drawing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item of business is consideration of the Henry James Special Exception Request. Somewhere we have the recommendation. Thank you, Jackie. Are we ready to give some motion?
I'll give that one, Jackie.
Pardon? Keep that one, Jackie.
Just refer to that. Your condition is a statute made to remedy it, such and such.
Okay.
If we're okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Are people ready to entertain a motion here?
I am.
Tom, you okay? You're abstaining?
I am.
Okay, everybody, go ahead.
Okay. Application 18-63 of Brennan White Castle Booze Architects' Agent, Town of Simsbury Owner, for Special Exception Pursuant to Article 7, Section A, A dot 4, for Alterations and Additions to Henry James Memorial School on the property located at 155 Firetown Road, being located on the west side of Firetown Road between Simscroft Road and Branch Brook Drive, Zone R15. I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, oh, to approve application 18-63 and all the conditions in Attachment A and dated Monday, December 17th. Do I have to have an effective date?
Not a zone change. Okay. Do you hear a second?
I second.
Second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. One abstention. So it's five, nothing, and carry, and the abstention being town party. Okay, our next item of business is no action. We need to table this. This is the Texas Amendment. Yep?
Uh, no actions requested by the commission for this, we don't have to table it, because the, the advertisement would run through your January 7th meeting, since we have the issue.
Okay, we have a new application. Simsbury Historical Society.
Mr. Chairman, this application was discussed at the Design Review Board this evening. You have a staff report from me. This is for the construction of a wigwam in between the Hendrix Cottage and, there's also a reflection garden and sidewalk proposed with the design review discussed this, as to give you the favorable recommendation to the board tonight. This is, this proposed construction is associated with the 350th anniversary celebrations, so staff recommends approval. You have approval from me. Just saying one thing, the administrative zoning permit required for these, for these site improvements. There's a picture in my staff report of kind of representation based on the document presented by the, on Exhibit 7, Exhibit 3, I'm sorry, of the proposed wigwam.
Are these temporary improvements?
These are permanent, believe me.
It's a different-looking wigwam.
I'll be wigwam if you went to one.
I'm thinking of a teepee.
That's a teepee.
It's a teepee, not a wigwam, okay. I guess I haven't been to a wigwam. Unless it's a bar. Okay. Any questions, the commission? Pretty straightforward. Here, motion to, to approve this?
I make the motion to approve application 18-65 of Joe Buddha, Agent, Simsbury Historical Society Owner, for Site Plan Amendment to add a wigwam and brick sidewalks on the property located at 800 Hot Meadow Street. And it would be the Site Plan Amendment approval, subject to the following condition, administrative zoning permit. This report.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Danam. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry six, nothing. Thank you, guys. Okay, we have Special Exception. Did we have that? No, we have no action.
Yes.
Public hearings, January 7th, there's no action in that application. The same thing with the Site Plan Amendment.
Both of those...
Both of those related to Drake Hill.
Yeah, yeah, related to January 7th. This is for the improvements to the one old bridge property. Both are advertised for a public hearing. Design review discussed this application tonight and issued a favorable recommendation to you. So this, the public hearing and review of the Site Plan Amendment will be in the next meeting in January 7th. So no actions requested of the commission.
Okay, application 1868 of Chris Nelson for a Site Plan Approval for Temporary Liquor Permit for a one-day event on the property located at 1100 Highcroft Place. Staff recommends approval. Any questions? This is in accordance with our new program. And this Site Plan Amendment will modify our site plan at that site and they may have up to 15 one-day events per year on that site without coming back.
Right. It's just subject to an administrative zoning permit.
Right. With the caveat, unless there's an issue with the events, then the zoning officer has discretion to send it back to you. But this is your first application made under the new regs.
Right. Is there a draft?
Yes.
Okay, Jackie.
If there's no other questions, I'll read it. I'd like to make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
To approve application 18-68 of Chris Nelson and Brent Rail Agents for Highcroft Simsbury LLC Owner for Site Plan Approval for Temporary Liquor Permit for a one-day event on the property located at 1100 Highcroft Place. The Site Plan Amendment Approval is subject to the following conditions. Number one, approvals for a one-day event to be held at Highcroft Apartment Clubhouse on, I think this is wrong, it's January 10th, per their letter. That's okay, January 10th, 2019. And two, future events on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce at Highcroft Clubhouse require zoning permit approval from the zoning enforcement officer.
Move back up. Does it say up to 13 more, 14 more?
No, it doesn't. No. It's up to 15 total for the calendar year.
Right, but we're not approving the permit. We're making the Site Plan Amendment.
Just this one.
But we don't even have to approve one. We just have to approve the concept.
Right.
Right. So are we happy with the proposal?
I am, but I need somebody to second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Bruce is double happy. Okay. And I think for discussion, we should acquire a wigwam.
On my property?
No. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posp, Kerry six, nothing. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a referral from the zoning board of appeals for Hoffman for a special, for a variance, when they're asked the zoning board of appeals for variance for internally-lit sign on the property located in 36 Old Albany Turnpike. And this is for the Nissan property, Nissan building in the back. Does staff have a comment on this?
So I just have some pictures, just so you guys are acclimated. I don't know if there's, you guys can kind of share. The first batch, if you look, that is in the daylight is from the applicant. And the nighttime one is to see what it's currently like is from us.
Oh, these have some pictures?
They are. This is basically what staff really feels this is a use type of variance because it's for internally lit signs and we don't allow it in our regulations. So it was referred to you as all use variances are required to be referred to the zoning commission for comment and recommendation back to the ZBA. Their meeting is this Wednesday, so I'll be typing up whatever you guys' conclusion you come to, so I can present that to the zoning board of appeals on Wednesday's meeting.
So I just went to the notes that we have. This is a rear, this is on the rear of this property. It's behind other commercial buildings and they're saying to ZBA that this is a hardship.
That's what they're saying. Yep, and if you look, I think one of the pictures is kind of an overview of where it's located. They are angular to Albany Turnpike, so when you're driving, there are some instances. This time of year, you can clearly see the building. There is a picture, here's a picture from the summer when obviously you have leaf on. Obviously during the day, an internally lit sign isn't going to be very helpful. So, you know, trees in the summertime internally lit sign, I'm not sure what their business hours are, but I don't know how helpful it would be during the summer. Maybe in the, like, as it gets darker earlier, you know, before 5:00 p.m., they might be open, so that might be a benefit to them. They did show pictures, I mean, you can see it from 44. I now I don't know what their business hours are, so I don't know if it's better than what they have now, which is they're kind of uplighting from the bottom. It seems like it's pretty logical, but I don't know if it would be, this is kind of blurred. It's not a great picture.
Right.
Because it's at night, I don't know if it would be better for them if it's internally lit, more readable from the road than what it is the way it's lit up now.
Have we permitted any internally lit signs?
So the only one you've permitted in that area or that the ZBA has permitted is Burgerfy. And kind of the deciding factor for that one is it actually sits behind the plaza in front of it, so it really is visibly blocked from Albany Turnpike. And because they're right on the line with Avon, the argument was made that Avon allows internally lit signs, so therefore the ZBA was persuaded that they should allow the internally lit sign.
I don't remember them making a referral to us.
They did. It was in the minutes. It was a while ago. I pulled the file.
I remember Burgerfy having a facade that was not in line with our design guidelines.
Okay.
And we, as the zoning commission, said people from Avon are the only people who can see it.
In particular, Cross and Ride has it.
And Avon was very happy with it.
Is it still there?
It's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
So, but I don't remember them coming to us for internally lit sign, but anyway.
There were minutes from the design review board and it was, the minutes from zoning was just the motion and it was referenced in the motion, so I don't know how much discussion actually took place on that.
Okay. We were being easy.
Well, and this is, this is Avon Simsbury, Canada, I mean, where this is located. So now we have all three. They're saying hardship, the sign can't be seen, and they're saying it causes problems for customers.
That's what their hardships were listed on their ZBA application.
Okay, so you haven't talked to them?
No, I mean, they submitted their materials and it's not staff's responsibility to decide hardships for them.
So were they asked to have someone be here tonight?
No, typically we would not have someone come here for, their attorney will be at Wednesday's meeting when it goes in front of the zoning board of appeals to discuss the application.
What's the point of our deliberations?
Because it's a use variance and it's your regulations. As the zoning commission, the regulations are your documents.
So at the end of our discussion tonight, we're going to take a vote?
Yes, as to whether or not you think it would be appropriate for the zoning board of appeals to take under consideration and possibly approve the variance request for the turn of the sign.
Does the zoning board of appeals have to have a two-thirds vote to approve it if we turn it down?
They always have to have a supermajority, so that's the way the zoning board of appeals works.
And when referrals from planning come to us from other places, if they give us a negative referral, the two-thirds vote overrules that.
It's not the same.
It's not the same.
For the zoning board of appeals, no.
Every single application.
Every single application requires a supermajority vote.
This is really also.
When there are six-member boards, it's a little bit pointy.
Yeah, yeah. We won't get into the logistics of a ZBA being a six-member board, so.
If this is approved, does that set a precedent that opens the door to just about anybody claiming hardship to have internally lit signs, which basically would be in opposition to the regulation? I mean, it seems to me. And secondly, the applicant is saying that it's a hardship and this will improve visibility. And I'm having a very difficult time accepting that it will improve visibility. I mean, this looks pretty visible right here, internally lit, not. And so I just wonder if we're playing with fire here, as long as we want to have a regulation that says no internally lit signs in our town.
I think you kind of answered that question in the fact that they're using Burgerfy as their reason for coming in.
This wouldn't be the precedent, though. Burgerfy, we already did it.
Yeah, but the more you do, the more there are precedents.
I'm saying that's, this is not.
There are grandfathers.
There are some instances in which we have, you know, that was just completely different than, yeah.
Well, they have, I mean, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but they have the classic example of an internally lit sign that's not appropriate in the town of Simsbury. Every time I drive by there, I wonder how the hell they're at. There's a gigantic Toyota on the front of a building on auto park that is a backlit sun. The wall itself is a white light. The words Toyota in red, and I think you can see them from outer space. And somehow, that's not considered an exception. That was considered approved. How did that happen?
To be honest, I've looked through their file. I don't know.
It wasn't in the file.
It's not a sign.
It passed.
That's the first thing, I guess.
Well, it wasn't clear in the application that that was.
Okay, in any case.
It wasn't clear in the application that it was a lit wall.
Right. Well, I guess my thought on this, we'll move over to my side this morning. I mean, I've had, you know, in years gone by, there've been other things that have come to us or come to ZBA. It don't seem to recognize that our zoning regulations have guidance for the ZBA too, as well as for our deliberations. And largely, as our own, they're derived from the state statutes. And on page 174 and paragraph 4B, there's one sentence that says, "The exceptional difficulty," this is in relation to providing for exceptions. "The exceptional difficulty for unusual hardship claimed shall not have been created by the owner or the person or persons requesting the variance." Now, their number one item in the list that they wrote is the location, configuration, and size of the law. Hoffman Enterprises, under various names and officers, has been responsible for the location, the configuration, and the size of the law. And now they ask for a hardship accepted to our policy on internally lit signs. I think the Hoffman family and their business contributor is a great contributor to a law in many ways to the community that we have here, and I think they're an important business.
Okay, that, your opinion and I understand.
But I think that we need to stick with the regulations and I hope that the zoning board of appeals does too.
Donna?
I'm concerned about the precedent. I know the design review approved it because they thought that the light pollution was excessive and that it might be a better solution to backlight the lights, but I don't think that that's really valid.
Wait a minute, this didn't go to the ZBA.
It did. Yeah, it did.
It did. They actually issued a positive referral this evening citing light pollution.
I just want to say.
What did they say about the zoning regulations?
No.
Nothing.
Did you inform them that there was?
They were, they were more concerned with the light pollution. This was at the end of our.
This picture makes it look way worse than it is. Right. Because it's blurry, it's taken at night.
Which is why I just want to put that out there that they approved it, but I just don't think that that's valid.
Okay. Okay. You're against it, you're against it, you're against it.
I don't find it as a hardship.
Jackie?
If, I don't know. I don't know if the hardship is the same as other locations we've talked about, you know? I don't think it is. It seemed, I mean, like I said, we're looking at all the photos.
Tom?
I guess I would be inclined to say no, it's not hardship.
I think it's ZBA's role to decide whether the hardship is a hardship. But I think that the sense of this commission is that we don't believe they should approve backlit signs and that we're hard pressed to agree.
Internal signs.
So I would say someone should make a motion that we tell ZBA that we do not agree with granting a special exception.
So moved.
So it's a negative referral? Is that how we word it?
I think what the chairman, his statement, I think is.
The motion was, we do not agree with.
That's sufficient.
That's a positive.
That's a statement.
We don't agree with the basis cited in this letter. There's four recommendations in there as to why they should have it.
And the fact you don't support internally lit signs?
Right.
A longstanding policy, regulation.
I think that's a sufficient reason to give direction to the zoning board of appeals.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posp, six, nothing, and Kerry is.
We're through with this, but if it's not in the report, the written report at this meeting, I would appreciate if one of you would make sure the chairman knows about page 174.
So just so you know, as staff to the zoning board of appeals, I always comment on hardships and probably much to the chagrin of ZBA, I'm pretty hard with hardships and they have to meet state statute and self-created hardships are one thing I speak about and will be speaking about as far as this goes. So I have that covered, that follows state law and it's always in my novels to them.
Okay, is there any updates on our short-term rentals?
Mr. Chairman, just before we get into that, I just have a quick correspondence that came in this morning from FEMA. This is just to inform the commission in case anyone calls you. The survey teams will be coming out to Simsbury starting in December, running through the spring for updates of maps, the flood insurance rate maps. So you'll see, they will be coordinating with the police department to inform, they're going to try to work off public property, but when they have to go on the private property, they'll notify and coordinate with those property owners. The contractor for this is Green International Affiliates, they have proper identification. But this is really to inform this board because just in case someone asks you about this or says that someone from Green Affiliates, you can say, yes, it's a legit project. One thing, the advice to any homeowners that's contacted by Green Affiliates is request their identification credentials. They carry photo IDs and you'll be able to tell it's really the contractor with FEMA. But that's all.
You're doing soil samples?
This is a, this is a very, this is going to be a very comprehensive restudy. It involves surveying, they'll take photos, they'll go out and in cases where there's engineering data required, let's say there's a cross your culvert, they may take samples or something like that to look at the viability of whatever the instruction that's in the flood plain at the time. This is scheduled, so we will see the results of this survey work in engineering in 2020. This is, this is the first stage of updating these maps. This is a, the completion date is for 2021, which for a mapping, remap program such as this involving engineering of the maps, this is actually a very aggressive schedule. This is long overdue. The current maps were last updated in the late 80s. The digitized version that was adopted in 2008 really just took the old data and just moved it into a new vertical data set and put an area photograph on top of it. It was not what this is, which is re-engineering and surveying. So this is very exciting that this project is moving forward and it's fully funded by the federal government.
What about the Corps of Engineers? I thought the Corps of Engineers was responsible for it.
So, so this responsibility now goes with Department of Homeland Securities and FEMA. It's no longer a Corps of Engineers project. It used to be Corps of Engineers that was responsible for maintaining these maps, but since the Department of Homeland Security was founded, flood insurance, the flood insurance policy both from a risk map perspective, meaning the flood maps and studies along with the actual insurance actually moved over within Department of Homeland Securities. So now it all lives in one location versus two different places.
Okay. Okay, on to question of short-term rentals, are you?
So we have, at the last meeting, we talked about how staff had met during the summer with the intern from Town Manager's Office and we started looking at ordinances and we started putting together. So this is not a public document, but I'll hand it out just so you guys can kind of look at all the kind of different levels.
at all the kind of different levels that we're looking at as far as a process. This is all obviously very rough. It's not, it's not something we've actually.
We don't deal with non-public documents.
Yeah. Well, if you guys want to see a draft, then this would be the draft to look at to see kind of the direction that staff is going.
Okay, we can see that, but also the public can see it as well.
At this meeting, they can. But then you guys have to hand these back to us because it's not something that's gone, like it's, we don't hand this out. It's still a working document.
But did somebody request this through FOI?
Because this is labeled draft and this is a working document, it is not, it's a protected document under FOI.
Okay. So we can look at it and hand it back?
You can look at it.
Look at it and hand it back. Yep.
Okay. Pull up gloves.
So this, this draft ordinance was based on some of our work, as Robin said, we looked at other ordinances throughout the country and some of the main points that are in this. So as you're reading it, just to make sure this is aligned with some of the conversation we had at the last meeting.
Point 2C, does that mean that no one can do a short-term rental while they are away somewhere else?
In this case, yeah. That's just, that was based on, like I said, it was a different ordinance. It's assuring that you have someone present there and the homeowner is there in case there's an issue, et cetera. That's something that, because this is a draft document, if that was a concern of this commission and you'd say prefer more just a home, a homeowner situation where they live and own at the house versus running, you know, basically buying a house and just using it permanently as an air, as a, as a rental unit.
I just suggested at some point we might want to define what present means.
So neighbor notification.
That's blank again.
Yeah, I noticed that.
This was like a one-day work session. I mean, this doesn't get any more.
Are there any other counts?
Yes, that's where that came from, is nationally there is neighbor notification. That's just something we left there.
Like a buddy neighbor?
Like a buddy neighbors, right? So similar to like when we're having a public hearing and we notify everyone within 100 feet, it would be something similar to that.
So you would notify neighbors from, who would, who notifies?
Well, I mean, it could be one of two ways. Either the applicant could be responsible, you write that, you know, as part of your licensing process, kind of like if you were filing a, an application that triggered a special permit, they would send a letter out basically stating that an application for license has been applied for. And it's informing the neighbors so then this commission and or the board of selectmen doesn't have neighbors come in and they're going, I didn't know my neighbor was doing this until they discovered it on various sites, et cetera.
So I, I guess I just wonder, once you notify the neighbors and one of them goes, I don't want that, then what's the process then?
So because this would be under an ordinance, under Title VII, their, their path for appeals would be to the courts and saying that, let's say that under Title VII, a license was approved and it was not properly vetted or it did not meet the standards of this ordinance.
These are, these are things that we would consider and recommend to the selectmen for adoption. The details of these things are really up to the selectmen to decide. What are the, what are the changes that would be needed in our zoning regulations for the selectmen to be able to do an ordinance like this?
So two things that occur. One is defining the use, which in this, in this document in section two with definitions, we would, we would develop a, a definition of what a short-term rental is, which mirrors the definitions in the ordinance. So you don't have the two documents conflicting each other, what it, what it is a short-term rental. Secondly, once we have that use clearly defined, we put it in as a use that's allowed as of right in all residential zoning districts in the regular, in the zoning regulations, unless the commission wanted to expand that beyond the residential. You could say, you can also add in the business, because you, business zones, you do allow certain business use, I mean, residential uses, provided they conform to a percentage.
And as a center zone, for example.
The center zone is a little different. That has a little more leeway in how residential uses are defined in the code. That one I would, I would lean towards, we may not have, we may have minimal changes there because we've looked at that and it.
Actually kind of already talks about short-term rentals.
Yeah, kind of hints at short-term rentals, boarding houses, rooming houses, similar to you, lodging houses. So.
And we have regulations for boarding houses and rentals. We permit someone to rent a room in a house.
Yeah. So the regs allow, they define what a boarding house is and then said, and then basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, it's more than three people renting rooms in a house, you're considered a boarding house not to exceed 12, which is, which is actually, in Article 6, boarding houses are pro-pitited use, called out as defined, unless expressively permitted in the regulations, which that's, that is a conversation that actually has, was we probably, in January, maybe we have some time, we would like to bring the update on your zoning regulations, kind of work that we've been doing. At the same time, there's a few items, boarding house is one of them that are on our radar that we'd like to discuss with the commission and then and or have Bob DiCrescenzo here to discuss that. The other is definition family, which flies in conflict of your definition of boarding houses.
We, I thought in our regs, we permitted a homeowner to rent up to five rooms.
No. You permit, you permit in your regs, you could have up to five unrelated people living kind of commune, meaning they're one, one housekeeping unit. So there's, everyone has their meals and like bathrooms or sanitary features are all kind of shared amongst the, the house and kind of they're renting as the housemates. The, the issue with the boarding houses is you get an independence or almost like condo sort of setup when you're renting out the rooms to people, at least what we've seen in the violations that occurred in town. Because you say up to five, the common misconception people have is, well, I have five unrelated people here, you say that's a family, not a boarding house, everyone's living as a family here, yet then the regs go on to define a boarding house of renting rooms, you know, more than three, you know, more than 12. Once you hit 12, you're considered a hotel. So it's, it's another issue that we'd like to intertwine with each other. And it's, it is an issue that as staff, we have, we have said that we would like counsel present because we run into with the, the subject matter of lodging house, boarding house, and the definition of family especially, up against fair housing and other federal laws that we would like to avoid unneeded lawsuits if, once we amend the regs and kind of, kind of like not be in the position if you, you know, a city of Hartford, Scarborough or that sort of thing.
Now, we have here a requirement that it be owner occupied. I don't think, I know that Donna's in favor of that. I am not in favor of that.
Well, I don't think they have to be, I would just like to see it as a primary residence. I don't think they should be there, like to live there.
If, if I buy a house next to me or across town from me, I can rent that to anybody and I don't have to live there or be there. And so this is telling me that I can't rent for less than 30 days. And I'm not sure that you really want that. That reduces the property value. It's taking a right away and.
Why does that reduce the property value?
Because if I can't do something with the property, it's, it's valued.
You can rent it.
You can rent it.
I can't rent it.
For a year at a time.
I can rent it for a year, but I can't rent it for a week at a time or two weeks at a time.
Well, if I were next door, I just, I would rather see a renter live there than I would rather see different people.
You'd rather see somebody who's leasing it for a year.
Yes.
Than people coming in and out that I don't know all the time.
And there's no one there to supervise.
Right. And so that's, that's the struggle point, but.
Gets out of hand.
It can get out of hand and that's why I thought that ordinance was a better way to deal with it. Because if the neighbors are annoyed and they come to the town and they say, this is crazy, then they can revoke the permit or call them in front of them and say, you know, you're violating the no noise part of our agreement and solve the problem without restricting the ownership rights.
The chairman brings up another good point is when it talks about permits issued to someone. I kind of talked, what's the neighbor's recourse if they felt a permit was issued in error? But the other flip side is the issues with violating these terms. If it's a zoning matter, really, let's say it's a special exception, special exception will run with the land, kind of like a variance. Revoking a special exception is, I'm not aware of case law that says you can do that.
You can't do that.
I thought we sort of passed that by.
Right.
No, no, just reentering, yeah, it's.
You know, but we're, we're kind of folding into the ordinance, things that.
See, I think there's, you make a good point, Dave. I don't have, I'm not in cement over here, but I think that as we look at, there's so many issues that we should sort of move some to the side and come back to them like that so that we can, you know, get to some agreement generally on maybe 80% of them. And then there's maybe three or four, maybe more that need more intensive. Because I think every community, while we know there aren't many of them in America, but maybe elsewhere there are, that are trying to regulate short-term rentals, they, they deal with the same issues. And so maybe somebody else, there's some insight out there if we look forward. We could tie ourselves in knots really on just a few. And the whole thing gets sort of unresolved and time goes on.
Well, we're, we're just having discussions I know right now. That's not, my point is, my point is to bring up this side of it. I may look the other way when it comes to it.
Right, right.
But to, I mean, to what you're saying, though, my only concern is that they're in residential neighborhoods and that the residential aspect of the home still be preserved. And when you have people coming in and out, you don't have a neighbor anymore, you have a business. But that's fine. That's my concern.
And there are lots of places where that goes on all the time. In Montreal, I've rented apartments that are there and are just generally used for that. And it was cheaper in a hotel, a lot more space. We didn't make any noise, nobody cared.
That's a different occasion though.
I know, but you have to be careful.
Well, no, you're the one using it. And I've used it before too, and it's great, but if I live next to them, I'm not sure.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
We wait on them here. It's okay over there.
Yeah, it's a little bit different.
I know, it's different, you know.
It's a little bit different.
And so just in looking at these things, I appreciate your putting them together, but one of the things should be to segregate the things that really should be in an ordinance and put the things that we have to say and what the implications of that are. And if we are going to state that a short-term rental is X, Y, and Z, are we doing something? Are we affecting property rights? And should we do that? I don't know. Because right now, people can rent, you own the thing, you can rent it. And it's only because people are complaining that day-to-day was not ours.
Well, don't, don't we have zoning regulations, some of which are based on what kind of community the public wishes to live, this public wishes to live in? I'm sure there are many regulations saying, well, people of Simsbury want this kind of law in, in the town. And I resonate to, I know I'm an alderman, but I resonate to the idea that stability in a neighborhood is important. It's an important value. And people coming in and coming out, and you don't know who they are, you got to get to know them. It does change the character of the neighborhood, and I'm not so sure the public wants that modification in the culture of our neighborhoods.
I'm not sure you can get unanimity in agreement even on a block.
Yeah.
For these things. And so I just want us to, I want the discussion to be open and out there, not open and shut, oh yeah, I'm going to do this. But anyway, like for the zoning regs, recommendations, and the things that we would, might recommend because the selectmen are going to vote on it. It's going to be a public hearing process and what's going to come out of there is not going to be what we give them as a recommendation.
I mean, I think that what you guys have to say as far as what you would like to see, it is a land use issue, even if they do it on an ordinance side, weighs heavily on their consideration. And what I would recommend is just, this is a working draft, like I said, that staff and an intern put together in a day looking nationally at ordinances. But it sounds like what would be helpful for maybe us to do with you guys is to schedule a time on our agendas to have a working session and say, these are the big-ticket items related to short-term rentals that we want to discuss as a board and what, what's important to you guys so that as we're working on an ordinance draft for the board of selectmen, we can go back and say, these are the things that the zoning commission as a whole thought were important and thought should be in an ordinance from a land use perspective. And I think that's probably a good way to do it, instead of us giving you this draft, which really bears no meaning right now. It was just kind of a starting place, a placeholder, so to speak. And then we can work off what you guys say to us is important and start putting them in a draft ordinance potentially and kind of work in between the board of selectmen and you guys as, you know, your voice and, and what you guys think is appropriate.
Is the planning commission going to get involved in this and have the same sort of discussion?
They're not regulatory in nature and it's, it's really.
But I mean in terms of opinion.
It, I, I don't know that it would be referred to them at this point.
When a conservation development identifies your responsibility to bill.
Any zone changes that we make have to go to planning for conformance to the plan of conservation.
When we proposed a tax amendment, then it will potentially go to the planning.
So if we put definitions or things in our zoning, yes, it would go to them.
Yes, yeah.
One more thing, though. I, I noticed as I looked through this, and I didn't read every word on every line, I don't see a definition of capacity, the limit, number of people that can go in there on a search, that's the art basis. I see reference to a multiple of the number of sleeping places or some sort of multiple destinations. There's some factor to identify the number of people. So you don't get, you know, parties with, you know, 88 people in Simsbury, England.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely something that should go in there. Yeah. Again, this is the roughest of rough.
The topic is controlling the number of people in all of this.
Yeah.
Really is the tendency to start the conversation, so.
Yeah.
We're trying to.